We're just going live. And yes.
Okay, now we're live. We're gonna call this meeting for August 6 to order. And first off, we'll have a moment of reflection. Thank you. If anybody has a bikini bikini area interest, they can declare it now or at any point in time through the meeting. And if I could have a motion to confirm the agenda. Moved by Bob Wilhelm, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Gary, moving on. We have consent agenda. And that would be items 5.1 or 6.1 to 6.17. And approve the July 2, 2020 council minutes. Does anyone have anything they would like to see pulled or discussed? Not seen any hands up. So do I have a mover? That would be Matt Duncan and second by Walter McKenzie. Those in favor? Gary, moving on again. Perfect. First up, we have POA. Oh, yeah, we do. Sorry, we have a delegation. And that would be Pierre Chauvin and HBC Planning Limited. And there he is. Yeah, I see Daryl. Thanks, Daryl. Okay, Pierre, you're up.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Pierre Chauvin with MHBC Planning. I'm here actually to speak to item number 8.21 under your section A2 of your agenda regarding the OPA number 184 for Nickel Properties, Inc. Really here, just in support of the application and in support of the recommendations from staff. And if I may, I'd be happy to just reserve any further comments or questions, answers to any questions when the item comes up under 8.21. If there's any particular questions that I can help answer. But at this point in time, I'll just say those will be my submissions and if you're in support of the application.
Thank you, Pierre. We need, we don't really need a motion to receive that. Okay, so now we can move on to POA. And was Linda on there?
There she is.
Linda does have a conference call with the province?
Yes.
So we're doing her first. And it just takes a second to get them back up here.
Good morning.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Linda.
All right. Well, good morning, Warden and counselors. Lovely sunny day. I have provided you with an operational update with my reconciled numbers the end of June. All provincial offenses courts have been closed by our chief justice from March 15 till June 16, July 6. But on July 7, we held our first audio court. Since we're a formal early resolution court, we're permitted to schedule certain matters for audio court and 165 matters were completed in July. The POA courts remain closed to in-person appearance till at least September 14. And Bill 197 received royal assent on July 21. Schedule 18 of that bill amends the Provincial Offenses Act to remove barriers to the electronic delivery of documents and remote appearances in POA proceedings. I've provided the numbers in June, but I have good news because I think we all could use some. In July, our charges filed for the month of July showed an increase of 205 cases above the monthly average. That's a 22% increase over the past three years. And our fines collected in the month of July are still a little bit down, but they're only 10% below the average monthly revenue for the month of July. So there's my good news story for you guys this morning.
Okay, any questions for Linda? Not seeing any hands. I have a motion that Perth County Council receives the POA operational update to county council for information moved by Doug Kellum, second by Doug A. Those in favor? She's a carry.
Thank you.
Okay, Swift update where he's not coming on the line. So Barry Swift is coming on at 10:30. So whatever we're up to at that point in time, we'll have to break for Barry Swift to report on Swift, for Barry to report on Swift. So we will move on to stage three reopening update. And that would be Lori.
That's right. Thank you so much. So this report, let me flip to it. So this is an update on the province has moved to stage three reopening. And council would have read about this in the paper and on some of the other council meetings at the local level. This has been reported on and of course, across the news. Council is aware that the majority of the public health jurisdictions had entered that stage three on July 17. And that stage three, just as a reminder, increases the gathering limits to a maximum of 50 people for indoor, outdoor to a maximum of 100 people. Social distancing has to be in place. Face mask coverings obviously are now required in all public locations. And there are still restrictions on a range of activities. For example, sports camps, amusements, water parks, et cetera. So still a pretty serious situation trying to manage and recover from the pandemic effects. And I have had Rachel working with me on some of the plans and I'm going to give her the opportunity to speak to some of those key items that are noted in the report. So I'll hand it over to Rachel.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, just before Rachel starts, for those who you don't know, Rachel's our summer student. She was actually with us last year in ACTEV. She's back this year and she's actually acting as a admin assistant to Lori because we don't have one. So Rachel, for those who haven't seen Rachel. Rachel.
Good morning. Okay, wonderful. All right. Well, good morning, County Council. Thank you, Lori. And so to briefly go over at a high level aspects of the report, we'll start with the mask and face coverings and cleaning and hygiene protocols. So as noted, we are following here on Perth Public Health Guidance and will be requiring that all individuals within the building, staff, tenants and clients wear face masks masks and coverings upon entering. And we have provided this, these masks to staff. And we are more than happy to do so for council as well if they so choose. And if you'd like that, please contact myself or the clerk. And we have made efforts to ensure there are sanitizers without, within all facilities as long, as well as cleaning solutions for staff to clean their spaces when they feel necessary. And we'll give a brief overview of some locations throughout the county, just to discuss on the efforts that we're employing to mitigate risk related to COVID-19. So the archives and I believe we have the manager of archive services on the line. If you have any questions at the end of the report, we can certainly defer those to Betty Jo. But Betty Jo has created quite a comprehensive plan in terms of reopening the archives. Includes operation procedures, consideration of clients' needs and how best to serve them. They do have a soft launch plan to have researchers make appointments so that staff can pull records for the clients, ensure the equipment is properly cleaned after the meeting and that documents are properly quarantined as well. So again, if you have any questions, I will defer that to Betty Jo. And council will note attached to this report, we do have a telework policy that was drafted by county HR. It is a current operational framework nicely formalizing the accountabilities and procedures of telework. And some county counselors may have already seen this at the local level as this has been passed by some local municipalities. And finally, for this report, I will touch on council and committee meetings really briefly. Staff has been working on protocols for when we will return to in-person meetings. While we will note that we have had great success with electronic meetings and they are ongoing every day. So with that, the report is before council and we're happy to take any questions.
Questions for Rachel or Lori or myself? Rhonda?
Just a question about masks. So are staff going to be required to wear a mask all the time in the office?
Excuse me, through the chair, not, not at their desk, but if they're in any public spaces, they will be required to make, to wear a mask. And that will be the protocol for the Superior Court coming in as well as tenants. So they require that in their protocols. So of course, we will follow. And that is a best practice and recommended by the health unit as well. If we're in any public spaces, we're wearing a mask. Now, if they're, you know, if I'm in my office, I'm not wearing a mask, but we will have Plexiglas in between staff while they're working as well. But when they come out and they're in the corridor or they want to use the restroom, they will be wearing a mask. Yes, absolutely.
So are we going to have a policy that states when the mask should be worn?
Through the warden, you will have more policies and procedures at the September 1 meeting. We're working on a comprehensive document that consolidates all of the requirements for staff to abide by when it comes to wearing masks, sanitizing, all those sorts of things. We do want to formalize it. Yes, that is coming.
For example, Rhonda, Tuesday I was here. Yeah, Tuesday. So Lori and Rachel and and the clerk and I went over, Tyler went over to the second floor of Scotiabank. He had basically had masks on from the time we started crossing the street till we got back out of the building. And it's
No, I'm just, I'm just
Something I enjoy because I end up getting a sore throat by the end of the day, but you gotta do it. Daryl. Daryl's got a question.
So you can hear me there, I'm sure.
Yeah.
We're good. So is it masks or face coverings? I'm a little questioning here.
So through the board, it's face coverings, but we do provide masks to staff and the public, we will have a supply. So if somebody comes in and they're wearing a face covering, that's perfectly fine. And that will be in accordance with the recommendations from the health unit.
Yeah, say the 3M masks anyways, or the N95s which ventilate off the side. What is the proper style of mask for yourself? But I mean, they push off and and then when it's just I was asking in exhaust form and it's viruses in the air as well. So I would say a face shield is good as well.
Face covering.
Face covering.
Yeah. Bob Wilhelm.
Yes, the policy for working from home. I'd like to see the CEO sign off on it, on the agreement or the, whatever you want to call it. Because right now it's the employee and the manager. And I'm very concerned that we get into too much working from home because that opens us up to a whole lot of issues and possibilities with WSIB, et cetera. So I'd really like the CEO to sign off on it and be aware and be concerned or address the situation if it's getting out of hand with too many employees working from home because I understand it. It's required now. But I'm concerned it may be become a habit down the road.
So through the warden, that is a great point to make and, and I agree with you on that. I think that was just perhaps an oversight, but we will add that on. It is important that we maintain corporate awareness of that. I can tell you in discussion with the majority of the management staff, everybody can hardly wait to come back to in-person meetings and get back to work. So there's a strong desire to either do a blend or soft openings when we do come to that point. But overwhelmingly, people do want to come back to work. And this is just formalizing some of the practices, the accountabilities and so that we're able to respond in a a positive manner when we have issues with people working at home. You're absolutely correct on the workers comp issue. We do want to make sure that people have proper workspaces set up. And you're not going to see that that is a commonplace opportunity. First and foremost, we would like people at work, but where there is opportunity to do this and it makes sense. We certainly would support this. If there are performance issues, though, however, that those individuals definitely would be working from the work location. So it's a good policy. I know it's already passed, I believe, at the local level in North Perth. Not sure, but the other local levels, if you haven't got it yet, it's coming. And it's included here because we need a resolution from council to actually make that a policy.
Doug Kellum, you had your hand up?
I did. Actually, Counselor Hurley answered all my questions. Thank you, Daryl.
Any other questions? Any comments? Okay, see you none. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the update slash stage three reopening report for information. And that county council approves the telework policy and directs the clerk to update the corporate policy manual to include this policy and that the human resources manager report annually in January on the use and success of this policy. As amended with the sign off from the CEO. Do I have a mover? Bob Wilhelm, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Gary, perfect. Okay, we are moving on. Update courthouse and One Ontario Street space changes. Lori and Rachel or whatever.
So thank you very much through the warden. This is, we've had a flurry of activity. Really great comments from staff when staff was made aware of council's direction to increase security and to make some positive changes to a centralized reception and dealing with the, the individuals that come through the building in a much improved customer service fashion. So this is, this is an update report for you. I did include a resolution with regard to the facility charges because we've mentioned in other reports, any of the changes would be funded out of the facility reserve. But it's a housekeeping requirement. I need a resolution from council in order to deal with a reserve fund. So that's why you see that particular resolution in there that costs associated with the facility changes. I will tell council, we will be back at the first meeting in September with a full staffing report for that particular function at the reception desk. And I know we've noted in there, just to give you a heads up, a little bit about the staffing that will be required. We do have a full-time equivalent already in our budget that we would be funding some of that from. But this particular report is to report on a significant amount of activity over the summer as we prepare those two divisions to move to One Ontario Street. And we've relocated almost every other division in the courthouse in preparation for the work to be done on level one. So the details in the report for some key activities, we do have a very short video that will give you an idea of what to expect when we're finished with the various components. You know, it's not all exactly like it is in the video, but it will give you an idea on what you can expect to see. And, and please note the initial, when you come into the building. Because what we want to convey with all these changes, we are making physical changes, but we're also making process changes. And you'll see with the person who welcomes you into the building, this is an image change and it is an approach to customer service that we want to elevate in the county organization. So if we could flip that on for a few minutes, it's only a few minutes, but it'll give you an idea on, you know, at least what to expect for some of these changes. And then because Rachel has been working with this project as well as Tyler, I'm going to hand it over to Rachel to go over a few of the work plans for the next few weeks. Is it on? Yeah.
All right, just one second here. We're gonna get it slowly. If there's any questions, I can walk through the, the video for everybody as well.
So through the warden, what we're seeing here is a 3D overlay of the first level. As you come inside, this here is the central reception. So as Lori mentioned, not everything is exactly as it appears. But this is the central reception with an accessible desk as well.
Watch this.
So this has central reception with a mail pass through slot through the door. So all mail will be coming through central reception and packages in one central location. Proceeding through the hallway here, this is going to be our wayfinding and our physical distance markers. They're going to look a little bit different, but it's basically branded for Perth County. And then there's our central access security door there, which will be accessible as well. Wayfinding throughout the hallway as we proceed to POA. So we have POA on the left-hand side and we'll, we'll show that. We'll zoom in here in a second. So it's POA wicked office one on the left and wicked two on the right. So this is an accessible countertop allowing individuals to go to either POA wicked one or wicked two for customer service efficiencies. That's an overview of POA. We're going to move into the boardroom. The paint color is not the same color and the windows, unfortunately, we don't have those windows. But this is just kind of a representation of what the boardroom looks like here, as well as the elevator and where the approximate location of said elevator will be. Little kitchenette. With built-ins. This, this work here will be done later on after the elevator gets put in. And then a centralized staff lunchroom as well. So it is currently is the P O P P office right now. It's, it's a small little office. And then we have the POA wicked one and two there. And then the POA clerks here as well as we move into Linda's office right here. So moving GIS out of this office here, this is the POA waiting room. This removes every individual from the hallway into a location that is more secure with accessible countertops for individuals to fill out their paperwork with a little bit of a waiting room in between the prosecutor, one prosecutor, two office here as we proceed forward. So this is Arnie's office, prosecutor, one's office here. So we've removed the prosecution from the administration of POA services. And then there's another second office that is used for part-time POA or prosecutor as well as any additional staff that may need workspace. We're gonna move forward again, back to the beginning, the hallway here and look at what is currently ACTEV's office and would be moved into an OPP office here, having representation of OPP with their emblem on the front door as soon as individuals enter the building. So that concludes our 3D rendering of the courthouse level one. Thank you.
Okay, so Rachel or I guess Rachel, you're up.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. So just a little bit of a work plan over the next few weeks and what staff will be completing. So the relocation of the prosecutor will occur. Again, this will allow for more physical distancing within the POA office, which will allow the third court clerk to be in the office. And again, we're working to balance the physical move with moving IT infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. We'll be setting up the boardroom at One Ontario. Wall removals, cleanup, flooring, things of that nature within the courthouse. We'll be installing the wayfinding on level one, the framing and install of the security wall on level one as well. And constructing the wicked and preparing for glass and counter installation. And again, recruitment of that customer service clerk for the central reception. So just to provide a little bit of a timeline for council, when construction will begin at the courthouse. So the week of the August 31st will be the construction work and the cleanup. And then the week of September 14th, we'll have the installation of the final glass and the counter product. Thank you so much.
Okay, and through the warden, financial impact, we know that we've dealt with a couple of contractors on this and the pricing is coming, come in within $2,000 of each other. Player Carpentry will be the firm doing the work. We anticipate the cost of the work to be approximately $90,000. That would include funds that we have estimated for all the accessibility push, push panels. And they're about $6,000 a piece on that. You will get a full report to council on the project costs, the details, all of that. And as well, we have put in a request for accessibility enabling fund. And we're hoping to be able to recover a fair amount of the funds required for this particular project. And as well, we also included in that application for grant funding, redo of council chambers, which would be all accessible furniture and the speaker system in terms of an FM system for people who are hearing impaired as well as the microphone system in the council chambers. So we will let you know as soon as we hear word back from the enabling for accessibility program, we have asked if they could let us know as soon as possible because these projects would be soon underway. And so, you know, we're hoping to hear back very shortly. And I know that we've put communication out to Mr. Nader's office to be able to maybe give us a little support on that from, from his perspective. But as I indicate, you will get a full report back on the staffing complement once we work out those details. The treasurer's been away for a couple of weeks on vacation, which is great. But want to make sure that we look at all sort of financial funding options for that particular business. Because it does support legislative services for corporate reception, but it also deals with POA. So there will be some funding coming from POA to assist with that particular position. And as well, once we do the securing of the security wall, we do need somebody in that particular office 40 hours a week to make sure that people can get through. We will be doing certainly registry at the archives and those locations where we're able to do that. Not everyone, I can tell you with the process for the reception office. If you're a staff member and you have a ticket to be able to get through the door, council will be giving them as well. Certainly, we wouldn't be stopping to tie up that type of entry to the building. We have a lot of work left to do with the Superior Court and Crown in terms of working out procedures. And we're pretty happy with our conversations with, with those parties as well as Stafford Police and the OPP. Everybody is, is very, very happy, very positive comments about council's leadership to address, to take steps to address the security and finally install a central reception in the building. So I hope that that is just an update. I do need a resolution to deal with the facility reserve. That's a housekeeping item. We would not post anything to that particular account because it's a reserve. We always require a resolution to keep our books clean.
Okay, first questions for Lori or Rachel or I have a few hands. Bob Wilhelm.
Yes, the, I believe the province has been requesting improved security in the courthouse for a number of years. Is there any way the province will assist us in the renovations? And also, will they pay a percentage of the wage or is there a cost recovery method that we can get to reduce our costs for the wages of additional staffing?
Thank you through, that's a great question through the warden. I do have a conversation or a meeting set up I do have a conversation or a meeting set up with the assistant Crown Attorney when she returns for, from vacation to go over those particular items. But in any of our discussions to date, there has not been that that option yet, but we will be going through all of that when we meet with them when she's back off of her vacation, which will be next week. And I certainly will let you know about that. Absolutely.
Did I see your hand up, Daryl? Yep.
Thanks. No, it's good that we're getting this one. Now in the upstairs there, did you guys ever lock those doors there, Lori? I know like the concern was huge. Was there ever temporary signage put in place to threaten people downstairs at least to stop the traffic? It was such a huge concern and that's months ago already. Just want to make sure that that was done.
Yes. So through the, through the warden, both front doors are locked at the, on the, on the second level, level two. We do have estimates to put up the second security wall on the floor that you're talking about. Those are conversations that I certainly want to have with the Crown because that has a, an immediate impact on their operations because they operate motions court down the hallway. So the only door that's open to the public on the second level is 24 St. Andrew Street. And there are plans within our level one centralized office to be able to set up a system where we lock 24 Andrew Street and we put a monitor there so that we can buzz people in once they're identified from the central location at the main level. We do get a lot of people because it's street parking, we get a lot of individuals that perhaps have mobility concerns that come through that door because there, there are no steps if they're coming into motions court. So we, we do want to work out some processes that are efficient for the motions court so that perhaps when we have those days, we do have a monitor at that, at that door to let them in. So we're not having people walk all the way around the building to be able to come in the back door and then having to come up that staircase, the one central staircase from the basement to the second level. But those, those concerns have been with us for, I'm going to say probably decades because I did see some photos of some previous drawings of a security wall. And I think it probably got stalled because of funding issues and who's paying for what. So we're going to revisit who's the funding for it. We do anticipate it would be approximately $15,000 to put that particular security wall in. Maybe a little bit more giving the customized molding that we would want in there to blend with the rest of the woodwork on that. But it is, it is underway. I wanted to make sure I dealt with the issues on the first floor before I bring you the second rendering for the second and show you what that will actually look like. But it is very much in the work plan for this year to address those concerns.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. One Ontario Street was sort of touched on. So it's basically ready for occupancy.
So through the warden, we are so excited about One Ontario Street. We've started moving a lot of the furniture over. And so the, the program wise, we would use whatever we have access to right now. For furniture, we've actually broken furniture up into pieces so that, you know, we have some very large furniture here that had, you know, three, four components to it. We've taken that apart in order to accommodate, because it is it's space where we need to put several people in a location. There will be sneeze guards, but we are using everything we can that we currently have. And then anything new coming in will be smaller, obviously, to fit into the space. It will be a much cleaner environment in terms of image. There is a file room, so there, there, I think, once council sees it, they will understand the changes that that type of space will facilitate in terms of managing your, your your office space. So there will be, it's only, it's only for a three year contract that we're over there. But it will set up a certain level of professionalism in the space that people work in. And there will be protocols put into place, perhaps that they didn't have in this building. Even when it comes to this particular building, when we started pulling the furniture away and moving things out, we found that perhaps in the past there was a wide level of flexibility in terms of even what color is painted, people hanging their own material on the walls. So for facility maintenance, we want to make sure that those protocols are in place. One Ontario Street, we anticipate that that will be up and ready to go probably by the 15th of the month. We will have everything over there and staff will be able to work from that location totally. And we're really excited about it. We will set up a time for council to come in and see it. If you are in, in Stratford at any given point and you do have a few minutes before you come back together as a, as a council in person, please let us know and we'll take the time to come over and show you that space. We're pretty excited about it and staff are pretty pleased with it. It, it's a whole different ballgame when you're looking at professional space to work in that provides an opportunity to be much more organized and much more collaborative between the two business units that are going to occupy that space. We're very excited about it. Very soon.
Okay, still no questions? I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the update slash courthouse and One Ontario Street space changes. Report for information and the costs associated with the facility changes. Bracket centralized reception, security measures, P O A service counters and associated technology. Be funded from the facilities reserve with a final report to council following the completion of the project. Move by. Walter, second by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? Scary. Okay, moving on. We got David? We need Pierre. Oh, we got Pierre back. We're good. Okay, so next we have planning application. David, I'll let you take it away.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Warden. Members of county council, first application we're dealing with today is official plan amendment 184. The applicants in this case are seeking an amendment to the county of Perth official plan for the purpose of amending a current site specific designation of the county official plan for the purpose of permitting a greater range of commercial uses, as well as to permit residential uses on the subject lands beyond those currently permitted to allow for a future mixed use development. The land subject to O P A 184 are approximately 2.2 hectares or 5.4 acres in size and are located on the western side of Mitchell Road South, just south of the intersection of Perthline 86 and Mitchell Road South, Highway 23. Subject property is within the special policy area E designation of the county of Perth official plan, which is a special designation that was applied to the existing agricultural lands via O P A 172, which was adopted by county council on August 2nd, 2018. The intent of special policy area E was to permit a variety of residential uses on lands located adjacent to the existing settlement area for the town of Listowel, where full municipal services are available and to allow for limited neighborhood related commercial uses. The subject lands are currently vacant, they contain no buildings or structures and are located on a separate portion of the same subject property to which draft plan of subdivision NP 1802 currently applies. However, the land subject to O P A 184, which we're considering today, do not form part of the noted plan of, draft plan of subdivision. The draft plan of subdivision, which is adjacent to these lands, was intended to be developed in three stages with a total range of 213 to 273 dwelling units, a copy of which has been included as schedule E to our report. Should O P A 184 be approved by county council, corresponding zoning amendment would be required to implement the changes permitted by the O P A and to place the subject property in appropriate zone for permitting future mixed use development. Decisions on official plan amendment applications are required to be consistent with the provincial policy statement. Section 131 of the P P S states that planning authorities shall promote economic development and competitiveness by encouraging compact mixed use development that incorporates compatible employment uses to support livable and resilient communities. The intent of the O P A is to allow for expansion of permitted uses on the subject lands that would allow for future residential and commercial development to occur on the same site. To ensure a high level of design that directs local control over the integration of residential and commercial uses on the site. The draft amendment provided under schedule H to our report does contain text requiring that an urban design brief shall be prepared and, and submitted as part of a complete site plan control application. In their submission, the applicants provided a concept plan to illustrate what potential implementation of the mixed use development might look like on the subject lands shown on schedule D to our report. While the draft text of the O P A does not dictate the represented layout on the concept plan, it does require that the site achieve a minimum density, residential density of 30 dwelling units per hectare to ensure a proper mixed use character. Given the approximately, approximate area of the site, this would require a minimum of 66 dwelling units to be established to meet the proposed mixed use requirements of the draft O P A. The concept plan, which has been provided by the applicant, shows a potential of 67 dwelling units for the site. The draft amendment also requires that in the case of mixed use buildings, that any residential units be required to be located in the upper floors of, of such buildings to ensure that they remain complimentary and do not interfere with any commercial business functions. The amendment also requires that the implementing zoning exclude auto exclusive uses such as car washes, drive through facilities and other commercial uses that may negatively impact the complementary residential uses. Given the location of the site and its proximity to existing neighboring commercial uses, as well as its location and proximity to future residential uses that are anticipated to be built through the already approved plan of subdivision. Development of the subject lands using a mixed use format would constitute logical and orderly growth that is compatible with and complimentary to both existing and emerging land uses, as well as those within the site itself. The permissions that would be granted through the official plan amendment to expand beyond the limited neighborhood commercial uses, otherwise currently permitted, are appropriate to ensure that future development along the west side of Mitchell Road South at this location is more consistent with and more closely matches the scope and scale of existing commercial development found to the north and the east of the site. The ability to expand the range of permitted commercial uses on these lands would help contribute to establishment of a more complete retail business corridor along the southern gateway to the town of Listowel. In agreement with the policy objectives of special policy area E, the proposed amendment would also allow for a wider range of housing choices through which to respond to the varying needs of the community and surrounding area, while at the same time allowing for a greater range of employment opportunities that could permit residents to reside in close proximity to where they work. In summary, the proposed amendment has been found to be consistent with the provincial policy statement and is supportable by the policies, objectives and intent of the county of Perth official plan. For council's information, we, the county planning office was in receipt of one piece of correspondence concerning the application that was received during the public circulation period on July 3rd, 2020 from Zelenka Priamo Limited. Just for council's information, Zelenka Priamo are planning representatives for Listwell Carriage Shopping Center Limited, who are the owners of nearby property located at 590 Mitchell Road South, which is the site of an existing cluster of commercial uses. In their letters, Zelenka Priamo requested at the time that council deferred decision on the matter concerning the amendment to allow additional time for their office and their clients to review the application materials. Zelenka Priamo expressed concern for the proposed development stating that approval of the amendment may result in a development not consistent with or intended by previous council decisions concerning the subject property. In their correspondence, Zelenka Priamo also questioned whether the market, whether the local market can accommodate the proposed development in lieu of existing and ongoing pandemic related impacts and whether the findings of the previous 2018 retail market demand study for the area are still valid. Concern was also expressed that there are no policies proposed that would preclude a commercial only development from occurring on the subject lands and that the subject lands are of sufficient size to accommodate a single large format retailer given current policies. Copy of this letter was included as part of our agenda package on page 126 under schedule I to our report. Subsequent to this original letter, which was also summarized at the public meeting on July 6th, the county planning office also received further correspondence from Zelenka Priamo on July 31st, 2020, which was received following publishing of the agenda. A copy of this letter was forwarded to members of council earlier this week prior to our meeting. In the subsequent correspondence, Zelenka Priamo expressed further concern regarding that the site could be developed solely for commercial use and that the proposed policies would restrict the forms of residential development for the site. Supplementing these new comments, Zelenka Priamo also provided a third party review of the existing retail market demand study that was completed for the municipality of North Perth in 2018. A copy of the third party review has also been, was also forwarded to council ahead of our meeting today. Lastly, at its meeting on July 6th, 2020, the municipality of North Perth council provided a recommendation to county council that the county of Perth official plan amendment 184 be approved. Copy of this recommendation has also been included as part of our agenda under schedule K to our report. To summarize, the planning office is recommending the county council receive our report concerning O P A 184 and that the respective bylaw be presented for approval and that county council approve the application for official plan amendment made by M H B C Planning Limited on behalf of Nickel Properties, Inc. for property described as part of lot 30 concession one, being part of lot 16 on plan 430 in the Elmer Ward of the municipality of North Perth. Thank you for listening to my summary and I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have. Also understanding that the applicant's agent is in attendance as well today to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions from council? I see Doug, eight.
I just have a question about another stoplight because I, it depends if, I don't want to, if home depot comes, there's going to be a ton of traffic out Twomey Street. We finally got a stoplight at the A and W. And so say I'm, I want to drive in there for lunch. I'm always going to drive down that residential street if I got to go north. Would there be any new inclination for a stoplight at that street too?
Through the warden, councillor, right? It's a very good question. My understanding is that there are talks and there was a traffic study completed for this area previously. I have, I'm of the understanding from North Perth Public Works that there is plant, there are plans in place to install a stoplight in this area in response and to accommodate the, the anticipated development that's going to be happening in this area as a result of previous approvals for particularly for subdivision 1802 that was noted in our report and to ensure safe traffic flows in the area.
Todd.
Just so we're clear on councillor I's question, I think Doug, are you asking about a second stoplight on Highway 23 Mitchell Road?
Yeah, like, so, so say I pull in and I've got my five ton straight truck and I know I got to go north. I'm not going to come out and try to turn left on 23. I'm going to slip up through the residential section. I'm going to slip up through the residential section and come back down on the next street because there's already, I don't know if it's a functioning stoplight. Last time I was through, it had, it's covered over.
Right.
So is there another stoplight coming there? Because you, you got sixty-seven apartment units and you got all that housing in behind. Anybody who wants to come out and turn left, otherwise we're all going to travel through that subdivision and I can tell you the street name if I look and, and come out at the light because we're lazy. I am. I don't want to sit there for fifteen minutes. Now, the stoplight will break it up coming from the north, but it's a busy section there with, with Walmart, Zaire is the liquor store. So I see Peter has his, Pierre has his hand up.
So if I can just, I just want to respond to that. We are expecting the, the power to be connected to the, the new intersection at Kincaid and twenty-three in the next week and a half or two weeks. With regards to a second stoplight there, I am skeptical that that will happen because the amount of effort that was required with the Ministry of Transportation to secure the first traffic light on that road was remarkable and painful. There, as you know, the general default position on, on the Queen's highways, including Highway twenty-three is to say no. And it was a long, drawn-out battle to secure permission to put the, the current one at Kincaid. So I do admit to skepticism that any further traffic light controls will be added to twenty-three in the immediate future.
Further to councillor Casenberg's comments, I remember in Land Division, a few years back, Walter, you'll remember this. There was a developer proposed for the other side of that street, road. And MTO at that time wouldn't grant access to Highway twenty-three or Mitchell Street. So do you remember that? So I'm actually surprised you actually got Kincaid Street and I'm surprised you've got a stoplight, to be honest with you. Pierre, do you want to address that?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Warden, that section was actually the, the connecting link was moved and the, that section of road now is under the authority of North Perth. So that's, that was why we were able to get those road connections the way we did. Having said that, because we are so close to where the connecting link is, MTO had reviewed the application. So, but for the frontage that we're dealing with, this is all under the jurisdiction of North Perth. And what I was going to add is that I wouldn't fully anticipate that because we're just asking for the official plan and zoning at this point, we don't really know the details of the specific uses, which will come through a subsequent site plan application that municipality would likely and would have the authority to ask for an update to that traffic study, which would then determine what other improvements would be required if necessary at that intersection.
Bob.
Yes, I guess I have a question for the county planning staff. Zelenka Primo, I think, did a good job at expressing some concerns and it seems like we're fluffing off that by not answering them or addressing their concerns. And I'd like to hear, do they have legitimate concerns or what are we doing about that? Or are we just going to sweep that under the rug and say, just forget about their concerns?
Through, through the warden, councillor Wilhelm, not that we're trying to disregard their concerns. I gave a summary of what they were. I think Zelenka Priamo do represent established commercial interests in the area. And part of their original letter stated that the, the proposed amendment is a departure from what is currently permitted on the site. Now, the site was originally intended, and maybe Pierre can interject here after I'm done. The site was portioned out and separated from subdivision eighteen oh-two, even though it forms part of the same subject lands. And part of that rationale was that it might be developed for commercial purposes in the future. Now, in order, for what's being proposed today would result in permissions that allow for a mixed-use site that would allow for a potential bridge to that subdivision. So you have a, a transition in uses between, between the commercial frontage along Highway twenty-three and the residential uses that are located further west into the north. What Zelenka Priamo provided in their following correspondence was some critical analysis of the market study that had been undertaken two years ago to back up what's being proposed today. Basically, that study said that there is additional demand that will need to be satisfied in the future for commercial space. And their third-party review did question whether that demand is overstated. I'll maybe defer in part to, to Pierre to, to address that as well. But we're of the opinion that even if the estimates in that study are overstated, they would have to be overstated by a great deal for it to undermine what's being proposed here today. So I'll, I'll leave it at that and maybe I'll let Pierre fill in some more explanation here in response as well.
If I may, Mr. Warden, I agree with what Mr. Gundrum has said. With respect to the sort of Special Policy Area E and some of the background associated with that, the link of Priamo suggests that, you know, this amendment, and we're allowed to apply for an amendment as anybody is under the Planning Act. But this amendment is contrary to the, the planned function wasn't, that was intended for these lands. I can say, having been involved from the very beginning of this approval, which included bringing these lands effectively into the Listville settlement area by way of the special policy, that special policy was really just a placeholder for, particularly as it relates to these properties, because, because early on in the pre-consultation with this application, we had always identified these lands as some form of mixed use or commercial use. When that was brought forward at a pre-submission meeting, county staff at the time said, well, that's fine. However, you need to do a market study to justify the, that commercial component. We didn't want to delay the residential component of the subdivision with this market study. So we carved that piece out temporarily until we had the study in hand. Subdivision was subsequently approved. We now have the, the market study. We proceeded with this official plan zoning by law application. And so that, that's a bit of the background and history with respect to that. So it was always the intention of our, our client to develop these lands with some form of commercial use. Now, what we're introducing is in fact, I think, a modification of, of a traditional commercial use and introducing and allowing residential uses here, which are also desperately needed in the community in the form of rental housing or, or something that's more attainable. So I think there's a dual benefit here to the, the community. And really from a very simplistic brass tacks kind of planning level, in my mind, these lands are well-suited for a commercial-type use. It's really not really an appropriate location for low-density, single-detached uses that would either back onto or have significant berms or, or walls to mitigate noise relative to the highway and all that. So particularly when you, and especially you have, this is your gateway to the community. You have commercial uses on the opposite side, commercial uses planned to the north. What else would you see here? And this would be, act as a transition to the residential community that forms part of these lands. So I think from a very basic planning level, this makes a lot of sense. And as David noted, if our market study, and we've tried to get a response, albeit the letter we received from Zelenka Priamo came in on a Friday and a long weekend, and we haven't been able to get a response from our consultant Altus to the comments, but the, the recommendation on our study suggested there was a need of over four hundred thousand square feet of retail space by twenty thirty-one. We're only max, maxing out at sixty thousand. We're less than fifty percent of, of the total recommended. If we're, if that study is wildly off, we're still, I would still imagine there's enough retail demand to justify these lands coming in. I think the, there were some legitimate comments from Zelenka with respect to some of the square footages that we're proposing in our zoning by law. So I see this as, as some of the implementation of, that we can adjust through our zoning application and we can work with North Perth staff on that. For example, the retail, the cap on, on food store square footage. We are certainly willing to talk to staff and, and review that and perhaps reduce that square footage. And if there's a concern with the, the minimum density that is proposed, again, we can adjust that through the zoning. The, the, the policy only suggests that it's a minimum of thirty, of thirty units per hectare. We can certainly make that higher and, but certainly to match the apartment densities in the county OP. So for example, in the zoning bylaw, it could require that a, a minimum of forty units per hectare be established. So it, we do have some ability to adjust and respond to Zelenka Priamo's comments with respect to some of the implementation measures. But with respect to the retail market study and the planned function of, of, of this property, we would fundamentally disagree with the comments.
Just, just a little comment that my, my crystal ball broke a long time ago, but looking at the number of store closures and, and such like, you really have to question, is there going to be much need for retail down the road as far as bricks and mortar? Because the, it's just astronomical, the number of stores that are closing and, it has to certainly diminish the need for bricks and mortar for commercial.
Other questions? Other comments? Daryl.
Thank you, Bob. And we, we as council are going to see the follow of this in the year from now. It's just warming up. We're getting these people into those hotels. It's going to be interesting. It's, um, into the day, we go forward. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Doug Callum.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments. All, all have been great and with, and, and speaking towards, you know, councillor Wilhelm, this decision is not being taken lightly by the municipality of, of North Perth, you know. I agree with, you know, the arguments presented in the letter. Sometimes they're weak at best. Even if the market study is overstated by the nickel properties, we represent about twenty-five percent of the justified need. You talk about bricks and mortar, we have, in North Perth, and just speaking on North Perth, we have four new businesses opening up this month. So whether some are, are closing or some are coming on board, it is, it's, it's, it's good progress for sure. And, you know, I think the most, you know, offensive statement that the OPA is not consistent with the intended by previous councils, things have changed over twenty years. And like Daryl said, you know, you, you, you need to, to move on. With regards to Listville Carriage Shopping, whether they, and this is my old opinion along with other people, that whether they are teasing us and they're putting up signs that things are coming, I think they just haven't made any solid planning arguments. They're just trying to restrict competition and we need to move forward and, and open this up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Any further comments or questions? I see Sally's up there. Did you have anything to add, Sally? Or we're just gonna, I have a motion here.
Sure. Thank you, Warden, through you to council. I, I look at this development and I recognize the comments that were made from Zelenka Priamo and I actually like getting that stuff, albeit I'd like to get it a little sooner in the process. But it helps us sort of check ourselves and make sure that we're, we are considering all the pieces. And I think there's been good discussion around this between the developers, Agent Pierre, and ourselves and certainly at council here today that, like, what they're, what they're suggesting is that we need to reconsider whether this is the right spot for this kind of use. Whether our official plan really wanted that for, you know, wanted that for this area. And when you bring it back to, yeah, what do we have today? What does this area look like? What are the existing uses? This is, to me, a highway commercial area. And it is for, it's time that we start looking at our spaces and places and say, okay, we need highway commercial here, but let's not just silo that and make it convenient to the traveling public. But let's double, double it up and make it good for the traveling public that's going through Listville, but also make it good for the people who live here. And we're in the process right now of putting a whole bunch of people living right here in this exact neighborhood. So I would like to see those people be able to walk across and get a snack without having to go across Highway twenty-three. I would like them to be able to go to a coffee shop or a hair shop. If we're going to put a bunch of housing right here and like the other part of this property is being developed right now into housing and if we do receive a proposal here for, for an honest shot at mixed use where there's residential and commercial on the site together, I really want to see, and it, you know, a good pedestrian design. I want to see it enable this neighborhood that's being built just behind here to access services amenities, maybe even jobs right where they live. And I think it's an exciting opportunity for Perth County to, to give this a really good go and, and show what density can be. Show how to do mixed use. And I think Pierre alluded to it a little bit, but I also like this transition between what's going on right on the highway and the residential uses that have been being built this summer. Just, you know, on the backside of those lots. And so I want to, I want to see some ability or I want to see that we can create a connection between those houses and the uses on the highway that aren't so abrupt, that you can go from those single-story attached homes over to the highway and it doesn't feel like these are very different. And why do we have like a big store right at the same place as these houses? So I think this lot, if we get a mixed use here, or even if we get some different types of commercial transition between that residential neighborhood and the highway, it will be a kind of a cool place to live. And I, I, this is the right spot for commercial development. And so I, I don't, again, I appreciated the opportunity to rethink this and for them to be critical because it gave me pause to say, was I being critical about thinking about this? And I think that we were, and I think it's the right spot for this kind of development.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Like Sally, I'm, I'm enthused about the mixed format that is proposed here. I had the opportunity in visiting my son in Boston last year, boy, that seems like a long time ago, to experience and encounter some new developments in the city of Boston that were similar to what's proposed here, believe it or not. And while we're not Boston and we don't have the size and scale of Boston, the brilliance of the walkability of those developments impressed me at the time and, and felt very humane. And, and that's what I really liked about this particular proposal is that there is a, a sense of humanity and, and working to create that mixed use that affords people the opportunity to visit very local, hyper-local almost businesses and yet uh and yet provide some additional commercial that's required and and justified in North Perth. Um, I'm I'm certainly cognizant of of what councillor Wilhelm has said. I believe that, you know, there there are uh dramatic social changes that are occurring as a result of the pandemic. But I also think that that councillor Callum nailed it in knocking down some of the concerns that were issued uh to us uh from Zelenka Priamo. Uh, and um, I, you know, I can't compliment him enough on his uh logic and his um his approach to addressing uh the concerns that they raised. I think there's a certain degree of unfairness, even a little bit of harshness in what Zelenka Priamo has said with regards to the 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 commercial study that um has been conducted. I think that this study is a an acceptable study that demonstrates um reasonable and 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 um and planned growth in our community. And um, make no mistake, uh Listwell continues to grow, will continue to grow. Uh, we have uh continued to uh knock the barn doors off in some ways of the projections in our own uh growth assessments on the residential side over the last ten years. And um, and I don't think that's abating. In fact, if anything, um, you know, we talk about the the uh the risk of bricks and mortar, but at the same time, uh, we're also seeing that the collateral trend of people moving out of the big cities. And I think that's going to accelerate and affect all of us in Perth County over the next decade. Um, so I'm I'm pretty excited about this prospect, even though I may have uh designs on it being uh or including more affordable housing. Um, and I'm not convinced that that's necessarily the case with the 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 proposal. I do think this mixed use thing is a an innovation that um we need in our housing mix and form. Thanks.
Okay. Don't see other hands. I have a motion here. The county council receives the application for county official plan amendment by M H B C Planning Limited, brackets, Pierre Chauvin, M C I P, R P P. On behalf of Nickel Properties, Inc., O P A one eighty four, for information. And that the respective bylaw be presented for approval. And the Perth County Council approved the application for the official plan amendment by M H B C Planning Limited, on behalf of Nickel Properties, Inc. O P A one eighty four, for property described as part lot thirty concession one, part lot sixteen, plan four thirty, Elmer Ward municipality of North Perth. Moved by Doug Callum, second by Todd Casenberg. Any further comments? Those in favor? Unanimous. Gary, thank you very much. Well, I agree with most. I wasn't saying anything to have done. I agree with a lot of the comments there. I do believe the bricks and mortar going forward aren't gonna be the same bricks and mortar we've seen the last ten years. That would be my comment. Okay, we're moving on. We have David again, we have uh O P A one eighty six.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, Warden, members of county council. Uh, O P A one eighty six, uh, the applicant on behalf of the owner of the subject property is seeking amendment to the county of Perth official plan uh for the purpose in this case of removing the subject property from the current serviced urban area institutional recreational designation and placing it within the serviced urban area residential designation to allow for future residential development. Uh, the subject property has an area of approximately point one four hectares or point three four acres having frontage along Main Street Atwood, uh, also known as Highway twenty three. Uh, the property in this case was the site of an institutional use, uh, having a church building which has recently been removed. The property is currently vacant, containing no buildings or structures. Uh, should the official plan amendment be approved by county council, a corresponding uh zoning amendment uh to the municipality of North Perth, uh zoning bylaw would be required to implement the changes of the O P A and place the subject property in an appropriate zone to permit future residential development. Subject property is located within the built up area of Atwood and is bounded to the south, west and north by existing single detached dwellings and to the east by Main Street Atwood. Given its location and proximity to neighboring residential uses, residential development of the subject property would constitute logical and orderly growth by means of infilling and intensification. Future residential development on the subject property can be appropriately and adequately supported uh by both existing and planned municipal services in the area. The applicant has proposed to pursue uh local permissions uh to construct a single story, four unit residential plan on the subject property should the O P A be approved. Depending on the internal physical layout of the structure, the proposed use would qualify as either an apartment dwelling or a fourplex as per local zoning bylaw definitions. Given the approximate area of the subject property, development of a structure containing four dwelling units would result in a net debt in a site density rather of approximately twenty eight units per hectare, which would meet the general guideline for residential density uh contained within the county of Perth official plan for fourplex dwellings, but not for apartments. A fourplex dwelling would therefore represent an efficient use of land and services at this location based on existing uh guidelines found within the county of Perth official plan. The draft amendment provided under schedule C to our report uh directs that a site plan agreement be entered into between the owners and the municipality of North Perth, as well that any required permits be obtained from the Ministry of Transportation where required and that the subject property be placed in an appropriate zone to permit future residential development to occur on the site and to regulate its location. A particular note uh to this application for council's information, uh full municipal services uh for sewage and water exist within the general vicinity of the subject property. However, Local Public Works has recently confirmed that the subject property does not currently have direct access uh to municipal water supply, uh but does have direct access to municipal uh water treatment supply for sewage. Uh, water services are currently planned to be extended in the next calendar year uh to which future development on the property could be served by uh future residential development could be appropriately and adequately supported by the planned future extension of full municipal services. Um, section six of the county of Perth official plan uh is permissive of small scale development or redevelopment uh to proceed on sites uh within Atwood where municipal water services are currently not available, provided that new private wells are subject to approval of the local municipality. Uh, in summary, the proposed official plan amendment has found to be consistent with the P P S and is supportable by the residential policies of the county of Perth official plan as contained under section six, four, eight, and its subsequent subsections. Um, the county of Perth uh planning office has not received any correspondence from members of the public in response to the public uh circulation that was issued on uh June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, at its meeting on July sixth, twenty twenty, the council of the municipality of North Perth uh provided a recommendation through to county council that official plan amendment number one eighty six be approved. A copy of the recommendation has been included on page one fifty six of the agenda uh contained under schedule E uh to our report. Uh, the planning office is recommending that Perth County Council receive our report concerning O P A one eighty six. Uh, that the respective bylaw be presented for approval and that County of Perth Council approve the application for official plan amendment made by two four five nine eight two five Ontario Incorporated for property described as lot forty eight part of lot forty nine on plan two fifty three in the Elmer Ward of the municipality of North Perth with municipal address of one seventy two Main Street Atwood. Uh, that's the uh contents summary of our report and our recommendation. I'd be happy to answer questions that council may have regarding this application. Thank you.
Questions for David? Not uh, no, no, not seeing any. I have a motion here. County council received the application for county official plan amendment by two four five nine eight two five Ontario, Inc. O P A one eight six for information and the respective bylaw represented for approval. And that county council approved the application for official plan amendment by two four five nine eight two five Ontario, Inc. O P A one eighty six for the property described as lot forty eight, part lot forty nine plan two fifty three, Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth, moved by Matt Duncan, second by councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Gary? Okay, we have ten twenty two. How long do you think we'll be on our next uh planning one here? For West Perth. You think that'll take more than ten minutes, less than ten minutes? We're gonna try and get through that before uh Barry comes on from Swift. Okay, David, take the next one away.
Uh, just through the chair, um I believe our manager of planning will be presenting on this file. Your counsel?
Um, actually, I was uh, I was gonna have Pierre present this. He has been the planner on this file, but I I don't think, is he still on the line?
Uh, he might be. I see his name up there. Just, oh, here's Pierre.
There he is.
Here, do you wanna present the uh next one here? The draft plan of subdivision?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, members of uh council. I'm just wearing a different hat uh this morning. Uh, as you've heard, uh, our firm has been retained by the county to assist with some of the development review for the municipalities of Perth East and Perth West. And so this was one of our applications. Evan uh Sugden, who was the author of the report, unfortunately is on holidays this week. And so uh I'll be presenting on his behalf. I should also note that uh Carolyn Baker, the applicant's agent, is also online. And if there's any specific questions, um she's online listening. This is an application for a plan of subdivision and Mitchell, W P twenty dash oh four uh by numbered company twenty seven two nine nine eight eight Ontario, Inc. It is a uh subdivision that's effectively an infill development within the settlement area of Mitchell consisting of ten single detached uh lots and eighteen uh free hall townhouse lots on um effectively three streets, the five uh or ten single detached lots will be uh developed on uh the existing roads uh St. George Street and Pond Street. Uh, and the townhouse lots will be developed on the extension of Thames Avenue. Uh, the subject property is located in the north end of the service area of Mitchell and is approximately one point five hectares or four acres in size. Uh, this is the the site is currently vacant. It was a site of a former industrial use uh that was located on this property and was demolished uh sometime between two thousand and six and two thousand and ten. And uh you'll see as part of the conditions of approval that a record of site condition be filed with the ministry environment to turn include that the site is clean and uh the applicant is undertaking that process. Uh, there was a public meeting held on July twenty seventh uh at uh West Perth Council and uh no members of the public appeared in opposition or spoke to the application. Uh, agency comments were uh very limited with this uh with the exception of comments from the uh uh municipalities, uh engineering consultant B M Ross, just advising that upgrades are being done to uh St. George Street and the applicant is uh going to be responsible for contributing to the costs of the uh the lateral connections to the five lots that are proposed on St. George Street. Um, we have reviewed the application relative to the provincial policy statement and planning act as well as the county official plan as and the Mitchell Ward official plan. And find and found that the application is uh not only consistent with provincial policy, but also conforms with the criteria in the planning act and uh the official plan policies. We therefore, and just in summary, uh, we recommend uh that the our report be received by council. And that county council approve this application subject to the number of conditions. Uh, twenty one conditions that are found in our report. Um, and I should note that uh local council, uh West Perth council also endorsed these recommendations and conditions at their meeting on the on July twenty seventh. Uh, so those are my comments, and I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Pierre? No questions? Still not seeing any? I have a motion here. County council, that the council of county of Perth received the report entitled application for draft plan of subdivision number W P twenty slash oh four by two seven two nine nine eight eight Ontario, Inc. affecting the lands described as part of lot four registered plan three, three, nine parts one, two, and three on reference plan forty four R dash three, three, four, eight. Municipality of West Perth, two sixteen George Street, dated July twenty nine two thousand and twenty, prepared by the consulting inch planner on behalf of the county of Perth for information. And the county of count, the council of the county of Perth approved the application for draft plan of subdivision number W P twenty slash oh four by two seven two nine nine eight eight Ontario, Inc. affecting lands described as part of part lot, part lot four registered plan three, three, nine, parts one, two, and three on reference plan forty four R dash three, three, four, eight. Municipality of West Perth, two sixteen George Street be circulated on July sixth, two thousand and twenty subject to the following conditions. And I don't have those conditions. Conditions in the report, I'm assuming. Okay, let's, the conditions listed in the report. Do I have a mover? Doug, second by Walter. Question, Doug, right? Do I have any questions? Those in favor? Gary? Okay, I'm gonna backtrack here for one second. We had a vote, we got about one and a half minutes. We had a vote on the last one. Apparently, uh, Todd, you wanted to make a comment on that. I didn't see your hand up. I'm sorry. You can always unmute and say something. I just can't keep following every face on the screen.
No, I know. I think um, Mr. Warden, with respect, it would be helpful after a motion is on the floor if you ask for a discussion and debate. Because certainly I have comments to make about that. But at this time, all I can say is um uh that I um have objections to both the form and uh my concern about the water for delivery in uh in on that property are um remain. I think that the statement that the municipality plans municipal water services in Atwood next year is somewhat overstated since that hasn't been approved by council. Um, I also take objection to the fact that the the developer of that property has placed signage immediately upon placing the notices related to public meeting indicating coming soon, a fourplex with a picture and a schematic of the site. All things which have not been approved by any councils uh to this point. And I find that that presumption uh is is certainly uh overbearing in the context of uh appropriate and planned community development. So uh from my perspective, um, I do wanna register the fact, even though you didn't call for it, that I voted opposed to the O P A. I appreciate that uh many of the things that I'm concerned about relate to the zoning bylaw amendment and the site plan stages. But there's only so many places where you can um have a comment or say about that particular property or your objection to uh the approach to the development or redevelopment of a property. And uh, so I did want it to be on record that I had concerns and that I was voting opposed to that particular O P A.
Thank you. I will have it noted in the minutes that you were opposed to that approval. Okay.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yeah.
Just for clarification, the last one we voted on in Mitchell, Pierre commented on twenty one comments recommendations, there's actually twenty six in our package. So we voted on the twenty six, is that correct?
So that was what was in the package.
I just want that clarification to make sure. Is our package shows twenty six, but he commented West Perth saw, or somebody saw twenty one. I just wanna make sure it was the twenty six we voted on.
Uh, through Mr. Warden, just to clarify, yes, there are twenty one conditions, but uh the additional five are clearance conditions. So uh in total, yes, there are twenty six. So
Thanks, Pierre.
Deputy Warden, he gets is correct. There are twenty six, but I was trying to refer to the twenty one specific draft proof of conditions as a balance our our clearances that you receive from the agencies.
Valley?
I just wanted to, sometimes it's helpful to have a little more like a glossary. I just wanted to, sometimes it's helpful to have a little more like a glossary or definition. I just want to say, so a clearance condition is, is just highlighting exactly who the county expects to get correspondence from. So with, that is related to the 21. So the 21 conditions include the subject matter and the level to which we expect something to be met. And then the five clearance conditions are really identifying an agency or an officer or who actually needs to provide correspondence to, to consider those other 21 to be met.
Okay, thank you.
We have Barry up there. Last, slightly, last 10:30. Oh, we'll see if he's there. Does that mean he's on?
There he is. He's there. He is there. He's on this list here.
So we're gonna address 8.1.2. We're gonna do the SWIFT.
And I can just, I just have a few comments to enter it and then ask if anybody has a question.
Okay, we have Barry online here now. This is regards to SWIFT, and I'm gonna let Lori make a couple of comments, and then we're gonna turn it over to Barry.
Okay, thank you very much through the warden. This particular report, Western Warden, Ontario, Western Ontario Wardens Caucus requested advocacy support from counties and local levels, and their letters to the CRTC and ISED. And the WOWC brief was attached to the report as well as the PowerPoint presentation made. The Western Wardens Caucus met, they discussed investments in high-speed fiber. They made six recommendations on how SWIFT 2.0 in the future could be structured and funded, and that's noted in the report. Western Wardens is asking the county for a resolution to support their advocacy campaign, and that's what's in the recommendation and the letters of support, the drafts were included in the report. There are no financial impacts with approving the letters. So if council approves the letters, we will provide the information as well to the local levels. And if they'd like to join in on the letter writing advocacy campaign, they are free to do so. As local governments through the pandemic, we note the importance of high-speed internet. We want to advance that expansion across the region, and that was an important initiative of the Western regions. And I do have Barry Field, the executive director of SWIFT. He is in attendance at this meeting online to assist if there are questions that council may have. As well as in the package, the last attachment was a dashboard update of the activity of SWIFT. So if there are any questions, I would pass it over to Barry for clarification and response.
Okay, Barry, I'm gonna let you just make a couple of comments first, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Yes, certainly. So, so the gist of this request really goes back and it looks at the two federal broadband funding programs that are out there. The first one that's being run by the CRTC. It's about a $750 million program. The other is the upcoming ISED Universal Broadband Fund. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1.7 billion. We understand the first round will be. And really, this is an advocacy campaign to make sure that Southwestern Ontario gets their fair share of those funds. If you look back at the previous Connect to Innovate program that was run through ISED, Southwestern Ontario got $0 in, in that program. We don't think that's appropriate. Effectively, our advocacy campaign through the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus says that we're about 10% of the population of Canada in Southwestern Ontario, and we think it's fair we get 10% of the funding that comes out of those programs. It's important to note that we're not asking for those funds to come to SWIFT. Those programs are project-based applications, so there are many ISPs that are applying to that program throughout Southwestern Ontario, and our advocacy basically says, don't overlook them just because they're in Southwestern Ontario like you did with CTI.
Okay. Questions for Barry with regards to SWIFT, SWIFT 2.0, Todd?
Good morning, Barry. Thanks for joining us. With regards to the SWIFT 2.0 ask, is there any way for you to project the, the gap that will be closed in terms of percentage premises covered or anything like that that would support our understanding of, of what that next ask will actually do for our communities?
Yeah, I, I can do that on a micro level within Perth County. I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, but certainly, Todd, I can get those back to you. Overall, though, what I can say is, is that the, the, the ask that we've put together for all of the WOWC gets us to 95% of population covered by that 50-10 benchmark that's been set by the CRTC. They, they have a, they've put out a mandate that we should be, as, as, the entire nation should be at 90% coverage by 2021, 95% by 2026, and then up to 100% by 2030, I think the date is. So this program we're putting together effectively says that we need about a billion dollars to get us to that 95% mark by 2026. What that means on a county-by-county basis, it may be a little bit plus or minus, but overall, it's at 95%. And I'll, I'll take a note to get you those numbers for, for Perth.
Thank you very much. I did take note, for example, in North Perth that the, the gap in premises right now is about 20% of our premises are unserviced. And, and I would assume, with perhaps the exception of Perth South, that the rest of the county will be similar. With SWIFT 1.0, if we want to use that term, I note that, that we may cover 10 to 30% on the optimistic side of the, the premises uncovered, which still leaves a gap anywhere from, from 70 to 90% of trying to get the job done. So that's why I'm, I'm sort of delving into what SWIFT 2.0 might do and its impacts on Perth County. So appreciate all your efforts. We know good things are happening.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Barry when he's on the line? I thank you for attending. I'm surprised I don't have more hands or anything going up there. Quick commenter question, Barry. I was on that conference call. We just discussed all these different recommendations. And I can't, and I don't have the number written down. What was the ask that was the possibility for the County of Perth? Do you remember that? So just that the councillors are aware of what may be coming down the pipe here?
Yeah, if, if you gave me a minute, I could dig that up for you.
Don't mind, because I'm thinking they'll probably want to know, so.
Yeah.
No, I think it was 2.2 or something, but.
Yeah, so, so further to this presentation that's here, there, there is an actual funding request that has been put forward. Again, the funding request is from the WOWC. It's important to note that SWIFT does not do funding advocacy. We support the WOWC and their efforts for, for, for advocacy. But in that, in that proposal, the, the overall ask for Perth County, if it's in here, I will get it to you. If it's not, I will need to get back to you on that, but I can do that relatively quickly.
Okay, actually, I just sort of found that. So percentage of need for Perth County is 3.6%. And the capital contribution was 1.77 million. And contribute, contribution admin would be 413,000. Total contribution, 2.19 million. The project funding is actually $17 million. The multiplier is 8.1, just so the other councillors are aware of that.
Yeah, no, and, and, and thank you for that. And the, you know, that ask would not come to council unless and until we were successful in getting that funding, right? So it's, it's not that we're asking for a commitment to that amount without a sort of guarantee of, of funding.
And another comment, so we did receive Perth County was a 5.5 million from the province. Or?
For, for SWIFT 1?
Yeah. For, was that strictly for SWIFT 1?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Any questions or comments for Barry?
I have one.
Rhonda?
Not necessarily a comment or a question, a comment more. I like the words "in principle" added to the resolution, only because I don't want to commit our council to any financial obligations here. It may be perceived that we're not, but I think those words need to be added because let's all be realistic. We're in the middle of a COVID, COVID situation. We have businesses that are struggling, and then we're gonna be starting to ask for more money from our tax base. So I realize that, that this is a very important issue. There are a lot of people struggling with their internet system, but I don't think council can commit dollars. And I just want to make sure that that's not what we're doing here.
Okay, at this point, Rhonda, we're not actually asking to commit dollars. We're, all we're asking, and I'll read the motion off, that council received the WOWC advocacy support request, and that council approved supporting the WOWC by providing letters of support to the CRTC and ISED. That's all we're asking for at this point. The dollar contribution will come down the road if we get funding.
Correct.
Yes, but if you go to the report, it says, in the last line, almost in the report, it says we're provide support in principle with letters. So I'm not understanding why the words "in principle" letters is not in the resolution then.
Because we're gonna write them all.
Because we're actually gonna write the letter of support now at this point. We were just asking for a support in principle, so now we are gonna actually write the letter. Daryl, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, and I understand here today we're, we're, we're not committing on the highest level. And to, I gotta echo word is, I just look at the fees to hear what we're feeling here. We don't know what we're doing with hockey for this fall. Registration is down. People late on utility bills is climbing with hotels. They're telling us they can't pay their bills. We're starting to feel this pinch, and it's not going to be nice. I was looking at the futures as farmers. It's not going to be nice too. And we gotta remember, we're sitting chair of a corporation here. And just this ideology that we keep coming to the county for money and government telling us what to do, it's frustrating to me. There's a lot of tough times ahead in the year from now. I don't want to be said, told you so, but the rain's on the wall. Thank you.
Okay, I did read up a motion. Somebody wanted to move and second that, and we could have more discussion. I see Todd's gonna move it. Do I have a seconder? That would be Bob Wilhelm. Now, do you have like further comments other than Rhonda? So we're not committing dollars on that motion. It's only support to write the letters to the CRTC and ISED. The dollar motion is a completely separate entity. And that'll be sometime down the road, and I'm guessing that may be further down the road than you want to see, because you may not get those dollars committed just right away. And I see Barry going like that, so I can keep forgiving him. Okay, those in favor of that motion? That's Gary. Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break. Because I'm going to the washroom. Oh, a stretch. Oh, a stretch. Okay, we got everybody back but two. They could be there, just not turn the video on, that waller's back on, so we're just missing Rhonda. So you might as well add Ashley and Justin to the screen.
Yeah. There's Rhonda.
Yeah, she's back. So we need Justin and Ashley.
They're, they're on.
There's Justin.
There's Justin. So is Ashley coming on?
She's, she's on, she's on mute and she's on.
Okay.
There she is.
There she is, no, yeah, that's Ashley. Okay, we are now moving on to the T I A O Regional Relief Recovery Fund and Justin and Ashley are gonna give us a report, I'm not sure who's doing which, but take it away.
Great, well, thank, thank you, good morning, Warden and members of council, the purpose of this report is to outline the economic development and tourism's proposed spending plan under the regional relief recovery funding that we received, the division was successful in securing earlier on in the summer. So the R R R F is administered through the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario or T I O and funded through the Government of Canada through their Fed Dev Ontario programs. The report contains two recommendations, first for council consideration, first is receiving report for information and secondly to the council direct staff to carry the proposed activities contained within the report. So just a brief summary, the report is in front of you, but as a DMO, the Destination Marketing Organization for Perth County businesses, a county successfully applied for funding through the R R R F program and received just over a hundred fifty three thousand dollars or a hundred percent of our project costs. As you will be aware, tourism was one of the hardest, the first hit and the hardest hit of the industries from COVID nineteen and likely be one of the slowest to recover based on code restrictions, travel restrictions and just overall willingness of people to travel, you know, further abroad, so the industry is definitely one that we need to continue to support. The county and other DMOS across the province have been working together with T I O, who is the administrator of the funding, to identify how the funding can be allocated at the local level. Each municipality obviously being in DMO area, being in a different circumstance based on the tourism industry in their area. So the broad objectives that T I O has put forward includes a three phased approach for tourism recovery, so this includes phase one being hyper local tourism, the focus here is on encouraging residents to be tourists in their own town, their own area. Phase two is welcoming next door, so the focus of projects in this phase encourage collaboration and visitors from neighboring areas as things open up and as people become more comfortable to venture further field. The phase three projects are part of the Great Ontario Bucket List, so this focus here is on more marquee events and attractions that put your area on the map and provide a collective set of experiences for tourists as a, as more things open up as consumer confidence increases. Those are the three phases that T I O has identified for municipalities and DMOS to identify in their, in their program funding. So we fit our programs within their, within those three big buckets. So in addition to the three phased approach to the funding, the R R F was also intended to provide immediate relief to organizations that had suffered revenue loss. Many DMOS are membership funded, some members maybe weren't able to pay some of their membership dues. In our case, funding is in response to redirected programs that we had to do of our existing budget due to COVID impacts, so any of our other projects that would have redirected some of our tourism funding away from our normally scheduled activities. The R R R F is intended to help us kind of do some backfilling on some of those projects and that funding, so the plan that we proposed allow us to reintroduce aspects of the work plan for economic tourism that were reallocated. It also allows us to exam, enhance some of our existing elements of our work plan and also to fast track some initiatives that we originally planned to propose for twenty twenty one. But based on the current funding in hand, it puts forward a few projects that would allow us to implement those activities immediately as opposed to waiting to twenty twenty one and also not relying on, or being reliant maybe on a other government programs that may or may not be forthcoming or maybe greatly changed because of the impact on principal finances from COVID, namely the red program, which has been one that we've been very successful in securing in the past and using the money in hand to really implement a project we would have implemented next year if we were successful with that funding, so the final consideration for the plan proposed activities that Ashley will go over was making sure that we had the staffing resources to deliver the various components, so the R R F is, aim is to be, you know, have a quick impact on the tourism sector and also has a hard deadline of spending all of our money and having our programs wrapped up by the end of the year, so it is a very tight timeline to spend the money. And the programs we've identified really allow us to make sure that we're utilizing our existing staff resources and able to deliver that, those commitments by the end of the year, so I will turn it over to Ashley to kind of talk a bit more in detail about some of the proposed activities and then put it back to council for the recommendations.
Thanks, Justin, good morning, Warden and members of county council. I will now propose a brief overview of the projects we hope to launch with this funding. As Justin mentioned, the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario funding is to be spent in pre-established phases. As such, our project plan begins in phase one, hyper local tourism, which we call the staycation. These projects are focused on encouraging residents to be tourists in their own backyards through activities such as day trips, support for tourism businesses to welcome visitors safely and stimulating local activity. Our programs for this phase include development and distribution of tourism recovery care kits building on the success of our local love campaign. The tourism recovery care kits will include promotional decals, branded P P E and targeted local support marketing. This project supports business retention and building of consumer confidence across the county. Our next phase one project is the Farmgate signage program, which will grow the Discover More Flavor brand through increased promotion and identification of our local farm gates. This project will allow vendors listed on the Perth County Farmgate map to receive a marketing package including roadside signage, branded sway items and additional promotional products to indicate participation in the Discover More Flavor project. These efforts will strengthen marketing of businesses and increase brand awareness to consumers, drivers and visitors in Perth County. The Township of Perth South has already launched a Farmgate signage project and bringing the Discover More Flavor signage across the entire county is the next step in this program. This project was originally part of our twenty twenty one work plan but is being fast tracked based on immediate support for businesses and potentially delayed red funding in the future. The last project to be launched during phase one is the Traveling Deal Wheel. This is a game show style business support campaign that builds on the success of the Perth County Bingo Cards, the Support Local Nineteen Days and Nineteen Ways campaign and it adds an element of fun and participation for local residents. This acts as an additional draw for businesses who may be unable to offer promotions right now due to lost revenue and aligns with our business retention and expansion strategic goal. Following these projects, we move into the neighboring regions phase two of the funding timeline. Projects in this phase support travel from neighboring regions as visitors are able and willing to venture further away from home and tourism businesses are more comfortable with travelers coming from further away. Projects in this phase involve reestablishing budget lines that were reallocated due to COVID nineteen pivoting initiatives. We will be bringing travel writers and influencers to the region to experience and promote Perth County through online and social media to other potential visitors. This is part of our tourism marketing strategy each year. We are being proactive to the increased amount of time people are spending online during the pandemic by expanding our digital marketing initiatives. This is also being done through creation of a NARCDY article that will support sending day trip and weekender travelers to Perth County and promote our region as a safe place to visit. We will be hiring a media company to create a fall themed promotional video. This will connect with the winter promotional video that has already been created for us that will be launching in December or January, depending on COVID nineteen developments as well as the weather. Our twenty twenty one, or sorry, our twenty twenty work plan and budget for the year involved creation of a promotional video for each season promoting Perth County as a winter, spring, summer and fall destination. Due to restrictions put in place because of COVID nineteen, creation of spring and summer videos was either not possible or not logical. So we're excited to be able to get this program back in motion for the fall, especially so during this time of recovery. Phase three, the Ontario Bucket List, is looking a little bit further into the future. This phase and associated projects focus on the must see, must do experiences and attractions in our communities. The Perth County Movie and Market Tour, which is titled Drive-In on the distributed report as well as the holiday shopping promotions are ideas that may be launched in the fall and winter months. These ideas are by no means set in stone as phase three is dependent on any future developments in the pandemic restrictions set in place by the province, by the province resident sentiment and remaining funding dollars. The main goal of phase three projects is to promote Perth County as a safe travel destination and to encourage visitations from all Ontarians. Projects we launch during this phase will be less locally driven than those proposed for phase one and phase two. As a funding recipient, we also have mandatory participation in the Culinary Tourism Alliance Great Taste of Ontario Road Trip. More information on this program is forthcoming from the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario and the Culinary Tourism Alliance. But I expect it to be an easy fit for Perth County based on our great local food offerings and the complementary development of the Farmgate signage Discover More Flavor project in phase one. So I will now turn it back to Justin to conclude our report and welcome questions.
Thank you, Ashley, so the proposed allocation of the funds that we've put forward in the report will allow us to deliver on the objectives, first and foremost, of the R R F funding. Also allow us to meet our, our reporting commitments and meeting our year end deadline to spend all the funding as well as it takes considerations leveraging of our existing resources within our staff. You know, we have a summer student now who will currently be going, he'll be finishing in August, so we want to make sure that the projects that we're proposing are being able to be delivered through our, our staffing resources, so I will leave it at that and welcome any questions and there's two recommendations for your consideration, thank you.
Questions for Justin or Ashley, Bob Wilhelm?
I guess Justin, actually I mentioned that Farmgate signage is, there's a budget of sixty thousand dollars. Perth South has already done that basically, so I guess in theory, we would not be sharing that sixty thousand. And secondly, with the movie, there's three, I guess, projected to have three different locations. But I think there's four lower tiers, so I guess somebody's getting left out.
So in regards to the, the first question, thank you for that. We did consult with Perth South about how we can make sure that the obviously having been ahead of the curve with their, the Farmgate signage, how we can continue to support them. So the, the, this is really an expansion of the program, there are elements of the program, especially the marketing promotional side of things that aren't that aren't, weren't included in the first round of Perth South Farmgate, so they'll benefit from that. We've also are looking into some additional reprinting of some of the Farmgate maps and a redevelopment of the map, because I know there's been a few Farmgates in Perth South that have have closed or reopened since the time of the printing, so that's one of the areas that we're gonna look to make sure that while Perth South may not be getting this, the the two pieces of signage they already have, they will be benefiting from the rest of the program and some additional printed materials in lieu of those signs, so we are looking to spread the, the funding out across whole county for sure. In regards to the second question, sorry, that was about the
Drive-In.
Oh, the movie theater, yes. I made the first, Ashley, I just would say that we, we were looking to, you know, obviously fit this in within the budget and try to find some partners because of our limited staff resources working with, with B I As, but by no means, I think these, the third phase projects are meant to be, you know, they're part of the uncreditorial bucket list, they're meant to drop people in from all areas, so they tend to of any of these drive-ins would not be to be exclusive to one one municipality or another, they would be county wide and the invitation would be to all residents, so I'm gonna pass it over to Ashley for anything she'd like to add about that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I, I see that it says three different drive-in theater events, but that wouldn't necessarily mean three specific different locations. As Justin said, these are more ideas, the phase three projects, because it's so far into the future. We'll have to see what's appropriate at that time, but yeah, by no means would we be choosing three municipalities and leaving one out for that project.
Bob?
Just to comment, I congratulate you, Ashley and, and and everyone with coming up with great ideas and, and continue, I'm not sure where you're getting them from, but keep up the good work.
Well, it's really great that we've got this money, I'm a little perplexed why we've set up for six month, or six weeks and bring a report here to council today. In the past, COVID changes every day and the Economic Development Department has been on top of it, they've come out with some great ideas, they ran with them. They've done things, they applied for this money and here we're sitting six weeks later asking for our permission to, how to spend the money, I think that they should have been on it, spent it, we want to be the leader, not the follower, and we became the follower instead of the leader now, so they need to in the future when, you know, it's great that you're coming up with the ideas, go for it, I, I don't get why this report even came to the, to council. Point is, there's a ten thousand dollar amount talks about additional staff, are we hiring more staff or what is that about?
I'll just address the first part of that question, Rhonda, before I let, so they have actually been spending this money? Well, this is an update as to what their plans are, they've already been working on some of these projects all along, the money is being spent. We talked about whether we'd come to council for approval for the projects and I said, no, you've done a great job, just drive on, just report us, to us what you're doing and that is basically what they're doing today. Justin?
Yeah, so in regards to that, we have been working behind the scenes to, a lot of these components of the projects to, you know, source, source some of the equipment, source some of the P P E, get, get those places in, in place that we can get that moving quickly, so in regards to the, the additional staffing component, so that would be I'll pay the ten thousand dollars, as I mentioned, it is a lot of work to be done in a short period of time and we are losing our summer student at the end of August, so it'll just be actually in terms of our tourism department, so what we've proposed in this regard is to bring in some resources, not, not necessarily hiring somebody outside, but potentially allocate hours from our coordinator to do some tourism activities or potentially accessing different organizations, so we weren't proposing to hire anybody for this, this would be internal staff, just reallocation of hours.
Just going back to the resolution, the resolution says it council directs staff to carry out the proposed activities, so to me, that sounds like nothing's going on, so then perhaps the resolution needs to be changed.
I'll deal with the resolution in a minute, Todd, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just a quick question for the staff team. Have you established some measures or metrics that you intend to evaluate? Have you established some measures or metrics that you intend to evaluate with regards to the, uh, outcomes of the investments that you've proposed?
So there are some, uh, reporting requirements as per the, the RRF funding. They are quite broad because the nature of the organizations and the funding is going out to municipalities, uh, tourism alliances. So you know, some of the, the requirements they've, 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 they recommend are, are quite broad. Uh, internally, we always track our metrics in terms of, uh, you know, marketing. We can track how many, you know, hits we've had on, on different campaigns, our social media campaigns. So, uh, for each individual component, we will definitely have metrics that will be reported back to council at the end of the year, as well as to our, our funding, uh, our funders, the TIO and Fed Dev Ontario.
Any other questions or comments? Gotta make sure I scan the screen well. Nope, not seeing any. So I just got a couple of quick comments. Uh, I just want to thank the economic department for the great job they have done. We have actually been the leader all along. They started with staycation back before anybody even contemplated thinking of that. And now every other municipality has followed and they've actually got some of the information from Perth County. And they may have changed the name, but the concept basically came from the county of Perth. And I'll use Urin County as an example. They call it in your backyard. And it was interesting, like a month ago, all of a sudden the province decided they'd, uh, do the staycation thing as well. So I know I had Ashley forward some material on to Lisa McLeod. Did you ever hear anything back from her on that, Ashley?
No, I haven't heard back.
Uh, maybe I got a touch point on Friday with the other person. So I'll maybe ask if they have any comments. Anyway, um, back to the motion. So basically all we are asking in this motion is direct staff to carry out what they have already proposed activities funded through the TIAO Regional Recovery Fund, which they're already working on. But I can change the wording.
Change the word from direct to support.
Okay. Yeah. Cause what we're basically looking for is support from council, not direction. So I'm going to change that word that I'm going to read this motion, then I'll look for more questions. Perth County receives a TIAO Regional Relief Recovery Fund Report for Information and that council directs staff to carry, supports staff to carry out the proposed activities funded through the TIAO Regional Relief Recovery Fund. And Darrell, I seen your hand up.
No, I, I, I just want to chime in here and I feel where Rhonda was, was very steadfast, you know, and she was chatting because the wording was rolled up here. Yeah, it was a little confusing and Rhonda and I talked on this and I thought it was going forward and then we're asking for support. So I, I see why you're wrong. I can feel her frustration as I was feeling it as well. But we got it under control and we'll go forward and, and the economic staff there, yes, uh, let's be the leaders. We, we like to let it breathe and Laurie, if there's issues, you intervene, but if not, hey, look, we, we got the team here. At this time within COVID, we have to ensure all our departments are allowed to breathe and go forward because it's complex. It's difficult. We're all under extra stress. And we have to have trust in everybody and let's do it. Thank you.
Okay. So I've read a motion. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Bob Wilhelm, second by Matt Duncan. Comments or questions? Not seeing any of those in favor? That's carried. Uh, just before you go, Ashley and Justin, so quick question. A while back, Meredith and I talked about maybe an online preserving or something, then we could maybe get set up through active because everybody and their mother's got a backyard garden this year. And, um, half the people don't know how to preserve or put the stuff down for future use through the winter time. Was there any consideration further given to that? Or you just, I know you're busy. So is it just too much on the go to maybe try to do something like that or just ask him?
Yes, quite frankly, as if I haven't heard of that. And this was, I think we've just been so, uh, preoccupied with all the other projects that maybe it hasn't been on the top of our list, but we'd be happy to hear more and maybe get filled in on some of those details.
I'll be honest with you, it's probably my fault. Earlier than I talked to this, like two and a half months ago, and everybody was trying to get seed to grow their garden. And that's when I told her, well, you're going to have to preserve it because you can't buy a freezer because they're sold out. And then she found out that they were sold out. You can't get a freezer until about November. Anyway, uh, thank you very much, uh, Justin and Ashley. Did we vote on that? We did, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. If we're going to move on, we have the tree inspection report.
I, I can speak to that. So through the warden, uh, this is a report that's put together, uh, by Marvin Smith. It's a information report regarding, uh, May twenty twenty tree inspections. So if there's any questions, I can forward them off to Marvin. No problem.
Darrell?
Yeah, no, I, I would just like to, to comment here on Marvin updating us with a, a couple of these alleged, uh, you know, uh, encounters that may have been good or bad. And it seems like he handled them well. He, he, uh, understands county bylaws well. And it, and it appears he didn't come off to embrace work with the people and that's nice. So this is good stuff. Thank you.
Uh, Rhonda?
When we did land vision the other day, we had a comment about, um, clearing off trees. And I'm just wondering if this is a time we should maybe mention it. Um, there was a comment made that it's cheaper to clear the cheaper to clear the trees off and pay the fine. And I'm wondering if our fines aren't maybe high enough to stop people from doing that?
Well, we can look into that, Rhonda, but in all honesty, it's, it's my understanding and you can all correct me if I'm wrong. You got to pay the fine, but you also have to replace the trees if you're caught. Like you just can't clear it off and start farming and that'd be the end of it. You're putting those trees back in the ground. Matt? Matt Duncan got a comment there?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is restoration part of our county tree bylaw? I do have.
John?
Yeah, it, it can be as part of, uh, the, the order from, from whatever the prosecution outcome is. Matt?
I, I think it should be, be a hundred percent. There shouldn't be a, there shouldn't be a question. I think we need to have a look at our bylaw and, and, and just stipulate right in it. If, if this is a situation where you're caught removing excess trees and and you're convicted, it's automatic that you replace them all. Along with the fine.
Usually that direction comes from whoever is the judge or whatever, dealing with the prosecutor. But we will definitely elevate the bylaw and put that, we could get that put in there and make sure it is cut and stone. And we, and we'll get a report back from staff on that particular bylaw.
Yeah, on that item. Yeah.
Is that good? Okay. Other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Perth County Council receives the May two thousand and twenty Tree Inspectors Report for Information moved by Bob Wilhelm, second by Todd Kazenberg. Those in favor? Gary, moving on.
There's a second.
And now we have, uh, what do we have next?
About eight point four point two, the second tree report.
Okay. Yeah. We have the June, uh, tree report.
So through the warden, same sort of thing. Um, this is the June report prepared by Marvin Smith uh, for the tree inspectors report. So again, if there's any questions or comments, I'm willing to take them and pass them on to Marvin. No problem.
We have any questions on the June one? I don't think I, I gotta make a comment and I, I'm going to read this back out of the wording. That's about how they do cut off some undersized trees. And they leave some legal sized trees. And, uh, lo, logging was always minimal or normal. And they always discuss running, but I thought when they were in cutting down trees, they could only cut trees that were of legal size, not necessarily some that were smaller. And I have seen the log truck go by my place and I'm pretty sure some of those logs weren't of legal size. I just, this point I'm bringing up, that's all. Anyway, I have a motion again. The Perth County Council receives the June two thousand and twenty Tree Inspectors Report for Information. Moved by Matt Duncan, second by Todd Kazenberg. Those in favor? Gary? And we're moving on again. Paramedic Services. Do we have, uh, Mike coming back up here?
No, I think I have to speak to that one.
Okay. Oh, no, he's in negotiations. So Laurie's going to speak to that.
He is. So thank you through the warden. This is Mike Adair, the chief of paramedic services. This is his information report. And so unfortunately, um, he, he has to be in the negotiations meeting. So he had just asked, uh, if we would present this for him and that if there are any questions that we can talk to, uh, Mike about after the meeting, and then he would either send a message, um, uh, through myself or directly to council with any of the, um, uh, follow-up that's necessary. So it's simply an information report. Council will remember some time ago with, um, paramedic services that every month you're to get, uh, an update report on their activities.
Okay. Matt?
Yes, I just have a question in regards to the, uh, community outreach, paramedicine aspect. There seems to be some information floating around social media that we're canceling that program. And it seems in the report, it just says we're transitioning from seven days a week to forty-two hours a week with that program. I'm just wondering if I can get a little more information on that.
That's right. Through the warden, we're not canceling the program. We are, uh, putting it into the, um, within the reef, the, uh, resources that we have in the work plan. But I will have, um, uh, Mike give you, uh, give council, uh, an update on that, uh, that is in addition to what he has in his report. But it is back to the, uh, budget of forty-two hours a week.
Which still works out to an average of six hours a day. Todd, you have a question?
Yeah, just supplementary to Counselor Duncan's question, I'm wondering if in getting a report back on the PCOP initiative, whether we can just sort of see again the, the details and the framework for that, that platform, that program, so that we understand what kinds of services it's delivering. Um, I appreciate that it's been doing, or seems to have been doing a lot of stuff in the COVID realm. And, uh, now that's changing, of course. I suspect that's a function of, of funding that was allocated for COVID, um, pandemic purposes. And, and now we're moving back to a plan that had been approved by council earlier, but I'd like to sort of get a, a sense holistically of what that program's, uh, next steps are and what types of tasks they're undertaking. I also noted with interest, uh, again, and I know that it was in our earlier reports, this notion about mobile integrated health. So I'd like to know what's happening on that front as well.
Okay, we will get a, a further updated report, but I know I sat with Mike Adair. I can't remember how long ago, a while ago. So because of COVID and everything, they did have to change around how they were rolling it out. So they have had to step back and take a rethink of how they're going to do it. They're trying to come up with a better, more comprehensive, more all encompassing program. And they're actually using some of the programs they've run very successfully other places. But Perth County's not Chatham, Kent, Perth County's not New Brunswick. So I know they're hardworking at it because that was one of the things that I was pushing them from the get-go, him and Mac and company, that that was something I wanted to see roll out. So I know they're working hard at it, but they've had to do a bit of a rethink. So we will get that report back as exactly how they're going to do it.
Happy to do that.
And we're more than happy to do that because that is something I have been pushing. Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Paramedic Service Update Report as an update and information moved by Doug Callum, seconded by seconded by Doug Aye. Those in favor? Gary? Next we have John McClellan. Contract Services. And this should all be housekeeping, but we'll see.
Thank you, Warden H. Sinney. Thanks. Thanks, Warden H. Sinney. Good morning, council. Uh, this first report is to recommend extending our janitorial services contract with GDI Services Canada for an additional two years. Uh, in the report, I've outlined the facilities and the cleaning frequency covered under this contract. And from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen, it was done by two different providers for a total of ten thousand, eight hundred dollars per month. In twenty eighteen, we tendered all the facilities together to have one service provider. And that was GDI Services with the low bid at a total of six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars per month. The current contract does expire in September and GDI Services has performed their duties well under the term of the contract. Staff are recommending extending the contract for an additional two years with the following amendments. A two percent increase in the contracted price in both twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Uh, further option to extend the contract an additional two years beyond twenty twenty-two. And the addition of the cleaning of the newly leased space at One Ontario Street, three times per week at a cost of six hundred and thirty dollars per month. Uh, under the proposed contract extension, janitorial services will cost seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars per month in the first year and seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars in the second. I would note that when we last tendered in twenty eighteen, the second lowest bid was eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars per month. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John? Bob, Wilhelm?
Um, I guess with the, down the road, when we open up the courthouse, um, I'm sure there has to be additional cleaning. Who, who looks after that, John? Is it the, uh, cleaning company or, or staff or, or who's going to do that?
Yes, through you, Warden H. Sinney. Good question. Currently, some of our facilities, we've had some daytime cleaning, just sanitizing hot, hotspots, things like that. Uh, and that's been done through our, our janitorial services provider. How we move forward with that, uh, still needs to be determined and just to what degree we need sanitizing within our facilities moving forward once we open up. So a lot of that information will be part of our, uh, recovery plans and, and brought to you before council. You know, that's not part of this particular contract extension.
Uh, other questions? Any comments? Not seeing any. Perth County Council receives, oh, Perth County Council receives the Janitorial Service Contract Report for Information. And Perth County Council approves the two-year extension of the Janitorial Service Contract with GDI Services Canada, including the amendments as outlined in the report. Do I have a mover? Bob Wilhelm, second by Doug Aye. Those in favor? Gary?
Well, my update, John?
Yes, thanks, Warden H. Sinney. Uh, in September, I do expect to have a report before council that will outline an asset assumption process to upload or download roads and bridges between the county and our local municipalities. However, at last council meeting, we did discuss the Whalen Line Upload and staff were directed to continue discussions with Perth South and Middlesex County to mirror the Whalen Line Upload being undertaken by Middlesex. This report here is to update council on those discussions and make a recommendation to expand on the directions staff are taking with the Whalen Line. Staff have met with Middlesex County, Perth South, Luke and Bedoff, South Huron and Huron County to discuss the Whalen Line Upload. In addition to those discussions, the county and Perth South are proposing an asset swap where the county takes over all of Perth South's half of the Whalen Line and Perth South assumes Perth Road one fifty-one. I've included some asset info regarding both one fifty-one and the Whalen Line in this report. Uh, of importance are traffic volumes. Uh, Perth Road one fifty-one is the lowest traffic volume of any road within our county road network at a hundred, at five hundred and eighty vehicles per day. That means it's a class four roadway. Uh, this volume has not changed significantly. Uh, this volume has not changed significantly over the years. Traffic volumes, however, on the Whalen Line increase the farther you go west. Uh, ranging from five hundred and sixty vehicles per day near Prospect Hill. To one thousand four hundred and twenty vehicles per day near Whalen Corners. Volumes have increased significantly over the last few years, leading to the upload by Middlesex County. The asset swap is reasonable on several levels, and staff are recommending to continue to pursue this avenue. I can answer any questions at this time.
Questions for John? Bob?
Um, I, thanks, John, that's a good report, um, the numbers are not surprising. On that at all, and I don't have a problem with, uh, moving forward, uh, in that direction. I still would like to see a policy developed on, uh, what, uh. Should be a county road and what shouldn't be, so I'm looking forward to seeing something come on that as well.
Do I have other questions or comments? Not seeing any hands, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Whalen Line Upload. Update Report for Information. And Perth County Council directs staff to further investigate and continue discussions with Perth South. In the asset swap of Whalen Line and Perth Road one five one. Do I have a mover? That would be you, McDermott, and the second would be Darrell. Those in favor? That would be unanimous. Okay, we are moving on again. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Uh, we are going to have, um. The Perth County Connect Update. And is Maggie on there?
You'll need Justin.
Or Justin? Have both? Oh, we should bring Maggie. There's Maggie. And there's Justin, okay, uh, I'm not sure whether Maggie or Justin's gonna speak to this report, take your pick.
Awesome. Good morning, Warden and members of County Council. Uh, so through the warden, I would just like to provide an update report from our Transportation Steering Committee, uh, meeting that took place on July twenty-first. Uh, so the committee, we met virtually, uh, to receive an update on the project and discuss the status, um, of each project component. Uh, so the steering committee report has been appended to this update report, uh, which provides thorough information on the status of the project. In addition to the committee report that has been appended, um, a summary report has also been developed and distributed. Uh, for a member of municipality to include in their consent, consent agendas, so that summary has also been, um, appended to this report. So since the committee meeting, uh, the provincial state of emergency has been lifted, and our deadline to launch the system has been identified. So as you know, uh, the M T O granted permission to launch the service six months following, uh, the end of the state of emergency. Uh, which means we now have until January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one to launch our service. So the county staff, staff have scheduled a meeting, uh, with our working group and our partners, uh, early next week on August twelfth. Uh, and in this meeting, we'll be discussing a recommended launch date, finalizing our agreements, and moving forward on all aspects of the project. So staff will then report to committee again on August eighteenth. Uh, after which the committee will make recommendations to present to council on, on September third. Uh, so we do continue our efforts on marketing and communication plans and finalizing each component. Uh, so that we're ready to launch as soon as possible. Now that the state of emergency has been lifted, we're really excited to be able to confirm on target launch date. And make some great progress over the next few weeks. So that does conclude, um, a very brief update for you all, and I welcome any questions or comments.
Questions for Maggie or Justin? Not seeing any hands, any comments? Walter?
Uh, it was interesting, and I believe it was last night on the news, uh, where Oxford County launched theirs, uh, I believe yesterday. Uh, from, uh, Angersall or Tilsenberg, uh, to London. And, uh, the fact is that there was nobody on the bus, it was an empty bus, but, uh, it did get launched. And I guess that's maybe one of the things that we have to be a little concerned about is that we have, uh, uptake in the ridership when we do launch this thing.
Absolutely, so Oxford, they, yes, they did, um, launch August fourth. Um, good thing about, um, our service, it is a little different, where we're doing, um, a circle throughout, um, our county, so. Uh, Voyago has advised that, uh, they're a bit more optimistic on routes like ours, uh, and ridership. Uh, in terms of ridership, but it's definitely something we'll be keeping a close eye on, um, when we, as we get closer to launch, and as we launch within the first few weeks of that.
Other comments or questions? Darrell?
Just a general question here, Maggie. The feeling still is there amongst, say, Stratford and Saint Mary's, they're, they're still feeling the movement. I know COVID has. People thinking and preparing and questioning what is going to come in the future. Is, is the morale still there within this Saint Mary's Stratford, they're still feeling it, are they? Thanks.
Um, so I didn't quite catch that, but, um. Yeah, so we are meeting with, um, Stratford and Saint Mary's early next week. Um, and we have made it, um, made our intentions of the meeting quite clear going in, so we do expect following that meeting to. Um, have moved forward on our agreements and, uh, confirm a launch date.
Any other questions or comments? Just, uh, further to the pend, or the, uh, state of emergency being lifted. And I realize there'll be some concerns about ridership early on. But you've got six months to launch it, or give her all back, so you don't have a lot of option there. You know, I'm anticipating the launch date wouldn't be till. You know, I don't want it to be December, will depend on what happened, it could be January, but it has to be launched by. January the twenty, what, twenty-fourth. That is your last possible date. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Community Transportation Steering Committee's Report. Perth County Connect slash July Update for Information, moved by Doug Kellum, seconded by. Bob Wilhelm, those in favor? Gary, thank you. Thanks, Justin, thanks, Maggie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on again. We have some bylaws. And a bunch of bylaws. Okay, the first one is by law number three, seven, six, seven, dash, two thousand and twenty, be read a first, second, and third time. And finally pass the sixth day of August two thousand and twenty. And that is concerning the O P A on the Nichols property, correct? Moved by Todd. Seconded by Doug Kellum. Any comments or questions? Those in favor? Oh, did you have a question there, Matt? Those in favor? Gary? And we'll see if we can get, I can't lick my fingers to get these papers apart, cuz that's not good. And the next one is, uh, regarding the O P A one eighty-six. And that would be by law three, seven, six, eight, two thousand and twenty, be read a first, second, and third time. And finally pass the sixth day of August two thousand and twenty, moved by. Do everybody put their hand up at once? Counselor McDermott, seconded by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? Gary? Uh, next we have. Notice emotions. Don't see any. Other business? Don't see any announcements. Not seeing any hands up, I'll just make a quick comment under that one. Most of you are probably aware that the land. Deal between the township of Perth South and the city of Stratford has been officially approved. And the M Z zoning has been applied to the largest parcel of land. In order to move forward with the possible manufacturing facility. Uh, just making that announcement so that you actually know that that is official now. That was what was voted on last February in County Council, and it's taken till now. That will be of great benefit to not only the city of Stratford and the town of Perth South, but the county. Of Perth as well as a regional entity in this, and, uh, that will also give us some more contribution to the coppers. Prorated to the date of approval. Okay, I have by law number, it's a confirmatory by law. Three, seven, six, nine, slash, two thousand and twenty. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the county of Perth. At its regular meeting held August the sixth, two thousand and twenty, is read a first, second, and third time. And finally passed August sixth, two thousand and twenty, moved by. Rhonda, seconded by Matt Duncan, those in favor? Gary? And now we have, uh, McDermott, so our next meeting will be September the first? Third, okay, so our next meeting's September the third, and I need a motion to adjourn at eleven forty-five, moved by Bob Wilhelm. Seconded by, uh, Matt, uh, you McDermott, those in favor? Gary, thank you very much.